Good evening, everybody. It's six o'clock right now, so I'm gonna talk a little slow here to get started. So we can let some other folks hop on with us if they'd like to make sure we don't get too far ahead in our conversation tonight. First of all, just want to welcome everybody to this information session and public hearing on the GM Detroit Hamtramck Facility and a proposed air permit that they have requested. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I work in the Eagles Environmental Support Division and I will be hosting the meeting tonight and kind of walking you through some of the process that we're here to talk about. So before we get too far into the conversation, just want to remind everybody that your lines will all be muted and we are going to be recording this meeting. So what we do with the recordings is we will post them on YouTube and then we also will link them on our comment page, our air quality permits, public comment page. So once those get up and get ready to go, we will be linking them up there so you'll be able to find them. If you have to jump off early or something like that, I will be sending a follow-up note after the meeting probably tomorrow at some point or as soon as we get that video uploaded so that you can finish viewing the rest of it or if you want to share it with other folks who you know are interested but weren't able to attend tonight, that is also awesome. So tonight, we're going to do things in a couple of different sections and I'll talk about this a little bit more later. But one of the sections that we will be talking through will be a little bit of a short presentation by one of our permit engineers. And then after that, we'll get to a question and answer. So I just wanted to mention that question and answer portion of the night right away. After that question and answer portion, probably when you guys are done asking questions or at seven o'clock, whichever comes sooner, we're going to start the official public meeting. So just to remind folks or let you know if you haven't been on Zoom lately, one of the best ways to get a question answered or get it done, get it kind of towards the top of the list is to type that question in as you think of it as we're kind of talking through the evening. So you can type those questions into the question box. If you really want to raise your hand to ask a question when we get to the Q and A part at the end, I'll just prompt you to be able to do that. If you are calling in, we did have at least one person calling in. If you would like to ask a question, you just need to press pound two on your phone and that should raise your hand for me and I should be able to unmute you. So before we get into the agenda for the night, I do want to introduce Mary Ann Dolehanti. She is our Air Quality Division Director and she's going to be the decision maker for this proposed air permit. She's here to listen to the comments and everything tonight. So I want her to make sure that she can introduce herself and give a little bit of a welcome to everybody for the evening. So Mary Ann, whenever you're ready.
Okay, thanks, Jen. Can you guys hear me? Hear me? Okay. All right. Thanks. I have my ear things in and sometimes the speaker doesn't work all that well. But so thanks, Jen. I really appreciate it and good evening, everyone. I did want to take a few minutes just to thank you all for taking the time to attend this public hearing. I hope that you have an opportunity tonight to learn about the project proposed to Eagle by GM at their Detroit Hamtramck Plant. We'll provide some insight into our air quality division permitting process during the Q and A, including what GM is requesting and we'll answer your questions before we open it up for the official hearing portion of our virtual event. Jen's going to take you through. She does a phenomenal job. So she'll walk you through everything and hopefully it will run real smooth. So I know that taking time out of your evening to be with us tonight, he does take you away from other things. So again, I really appreciate your participation. Know that public participation is a very important part and is very valuable to the work that we do at Eagle in the Air Quality Division. So whether you're here to listen or you're planning to make a comment during the hearing, again, I appreciate you being here. The comments that you provide to us about projects such as this one are very helpful for us to ensure that, you know, every aspect of what we do and in this particular case of what GM is proposing to do is thoughtfully and thoroughly reviewed. Your comments will all be taken into consideration when I make a decision on the proposed permit. And then, once that decision has been made, we'll be communicating that decision with all of you in an email form with contact information that you've provided. So at this point, again, thank you for attending and I will pass it back to Jen so that she can move us through the rest of the evening.
Yeah, thanks a lot, Mary Ann. I have a bunch of other staff here. You're going to see Mary Ann when we get to the public hearing portion of the night, but I have a bunch of other staff that I want to introduce really quickly. So if my staff can turn their cameras on, I just want to give you guys a frame of reference for who we'll have here tonight to our and who worked on this project and are going to help us out with the question and answer part of the night. First, I want to introduce my co-host, that's Matt Collinson. I do want a full disclosure. On Tuesday night, I was having some internet issues during our public meeting and I was really thankful that I had a co-host to help me out get through that. Hopefully that won't happen today, fingers crossed. But if it does, Matt is here to save the day for us. Want to introduce you to Dave Thompson. He is the permit engineer for this project and he's going to be doing a lot of the presentation tonight. So you'll be hearing from him in a little bit, in a little bit more detail. Also have Mike Deppa. He was a toxicologist that worked on the facility. Susan Kilmer is our air monitoring supervisor and I always try to really emphasize this. I know if you've been on some other meetings with us recently, this might be redundant, but I just want to emphasize that Susan works with our air monitoring staff. So she works with the staff who attend the stationary monitors that are measuring air quality in the outdoor air. So in kind of a contrast to that, we have Stephanie Hanksba and she is one of our air modelers. So what her job is, is when a permit like this comes in for us to review, she looks at what the company is asking for and she uses a computer simulator to see what those emissions might be in the future if the facility is built as is requested. And then based on that, she makes some assumptions and some assessments and provides those to Dave for help with the writing of the proposed permit. So two different kind of parts, monitoring and modeling, both really, really important to part of this project. And then I also have Jeff Korniski. He is our Assistant District Supervisor in the Detroit District. So his district office is responsible for the GM Detroit Hamtramck Facility. So you're going to be hearing a little bit from Jeff as well tonight to talk to you about the inspection process. You know, how we look at these things, you know, how often a company like this would be inspected by us and what we look at during that inspection procedure. So staff, if you want to, except for Dave, you can go ahead and leave your camera on. But the rest of you, if you want to turn your cameras off for now, we'll get back to them once we get to the question and answer part. So the first thing we're going to do is this information session and that's going to have a little bit of a presentation by Dave. He's going to talk to you briefly, if you haven't been on one of our meetings before, about a little bit about our permitting process because it does sometimes take a while for us to do that review and evaluation of what a company is asking us for. So what happens during that process and where are we now sort of in the timeline? And then he's going to talk about the process, this project specifically. He'll talk to you about what the company asked for, what the conditions and, you know, what our review looked like and what the conditions that we brought before you ended up being. Once we get past that, we will do, like I said, that question and answer where we'll be responding back and forth to you. Type those questions in the chat, raise your hand until seven o'clock or whenever everybody's kind of done asking their questions. And then at seven, or like I said a little earlier, we'll switch over to that public hearing portion. And I just like to be very clear that the hearing portion is where you'll be providing us comments, but we won't be responding back to you. So sometimes in a comment, people might ask a question. I just want to remind everybody in that portion of the night, we won't be responding. We're just taking your comments for the record. We will go over after that, how to submit an official comment because this is not your only opportunity. The comment period for this proposed permit stays open until March 14th at midnight. So you have plenty of time even after this meeting, if this is the first time you're hearing about this or you want more information or you want to review some of the documentation that we have onsite, onsite, I apologize, on the website. Before you make a comment, you have plenty of time to do that. So we'll talk about other ways that you can either send us an email or call our voicemail, send us something in the mail, whichever way you prefer. I'll talk to you a little bit about where you can find that other information that might be helpful for you and then who to contact with further questions. So for this facility, we did do some translation into other languages. So if you know someone who isn't attending tonight but might be interested in reading about this in Arabic or Bengali, we do have that available on the website as well. I'm happy to share that with you. So that being said, I'm going to take a deep breath and I'm going to pass it over to Dave. So Dave, if you want to go ahead and share your screen whenever you're ready and then you can take it away from here. Yep, that looks great. And don't forget to unmute yourself so we can hear you talking.
Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself.
That's okay. There you go.
Well, sorry. Thank you. Like Jen mentioned, my name is Dave Thompson and I am the Lead Permit Engineer who worked with a team of air quality staff here at Eagle to review the GM Detroit Hamtramck Air Permit Application. Before we get into the details of the project, I would like to talk briefly about what the Air Quality Division does and how the permit processing works. Now, if you've attended one of these presentations before, it might be some information that you've heard before, please bear with me. But for anyone new, we do want to get some of this information out. So we all know that pollution comes from many different things such as big farms, fuel burning vehicles and various industrial sources. And the overall mission of the Air Quality Division is to protect public health and the environment. And we provide this protection by using our authority under state and federal laws through the regulation of industrial sources. Excuse me. What's going on? Sorry. There we go. AQD staff do many things. For example, we monitor levels of air pollutants. We look at different toxics to make sure the public health is protected. We conduct inspections of regulated facilities such as the automotive assembly line we're talking about tonight. And we review applications and write permits for sources of air pollutants to ensure the operations comply with rules and regulations in place that are in place to protect public health. Now, the Air Quality Division has the authority to permit sources of air pollutants. However, I do want to point out a few items that the permit does not cover and that the AQD does not have the ability to regulate. You will want to talk to your local government if you have questions or concerns about issues such as zoning, noise and traffic. Additionally, the AQD does not have, or does not determine whether a facility is needed when reviewing an air permit application. We evaluate a project to ensure that it meets the applicable rules and regulations. Next, I'd like to give a simplified overview of the steps that the company and the AQD go through to get a proposed draft permit out for comment. First, a company like GM decides they would like to install, modify or construct a piece of equipment such as the proposed changes to the automotive assembly line. The company submits a permit application to the AQD. The application goes through review during which the engineer evaluates the information the company has submitted as it relates to the air quality state and federal regulation. If it appears to meet the required rules and regulations, the engineer creates a proposed draft permit. And once that draft permit is peer reviewed and approved by a supervisor, it is sent to the company for review. And in certain cases such as this one, the proposed permit is posted for public comment. Now, public comment is a very important, as Mary Ann said, it's a very important part of the permitting process. Anybody can comment on the proposed permit, including the company, which in this case, they have provided a comment. We will be talking about that, those comments in a little bit, but once the comment period ends, all comments received are evaluated and can potentially impact the permitting decision. Finally, a permitting decision is made on the permit. Now, this decision may be to approve the permit as written, approve the permit with changes or to deny the permit. And that decision is based on the ability of the company's proposal to meet air regulations. Once again, we cannot base our decision on the need or popularity of a proposal. GM, I'm going to talk a little bit more about the specifics of this project. GM is proposing to make updates to a previously permitted automotive assembly line at the Detroit Hamtramck Facility. Now, the main portions of an automotive assembly line are the body shop for putting together an unpainted vehicle, a paint shop where various paints and other materials are applied, and the assembly area where final operations such as glass, engine and tire installation are performed. Now, the proposed changes for this assembly line that was permitted in 2020 consist of additional natural gas usage and equipment, a few new pieces of emergency equipment, a new sealer and adhesive material and changes in a few in the size or location of certain stacks. As I mentioned earlier, GM has submitted comments requesting additional design changes in the natural gas equipment for this project. As stated before, anyone can submit comments during the comment period, period, including the company. These requested changes will be evaluated with the same scrutiny as the original project. And then we will evaluate, as I said, we will evaluate with a similar scrutiny. And I think I'm next, I'm going to talk a little bit more about how we review an application here at the AQD. So while reviewing a proposed project, AQD looks at a number of items. We review the level of emissions to figure out how the project and the facility should be classified. Based upon the level of emissions and the type of equipment, we determine what type of review is needed, including which rules and regulations the proposed project is subject to. One part of figuring out the applicable rules for a project is the location of the facility. This map shows the current attainment status for the state of Michigan. An area is considered to be a non-attainment if air concentrations of certain pollutants are above the national standards. Michigan currently has non-attainment areas for two pollutants, ozone, which is noted by the dark blue in the map, and sulfur dioxide or SO2, which is noted by the light blue striped area. Now, the Detroit Hamtramck Assembly Facility is located in an area that is considered a non-attainment for ozone. Ozone is regulated through two other pollutants. They're volatile organic compounds or VOCs and oxides of nitrogen are commonly called NOx. If the overall increase in emissions from a project for these emissions is high enough, then that pollutant needs to go through what is called a non-attainment permit review. Also, if the increase in overall emissions for certain other pollutants is high enough, then those pollutants need to go through what we, what is referred to as a prevention of significant deterioration or PSD permit review. Now, the application addresses these pollutants through a netting analysis to see if any of them are subject to either non-attainment or PSD review. Now, a netting analysis uses the facility's past emissions, certain increases and decreases in the missions allowed from the facility and the proposed emissions for the new assembly line to get a net change for each pollutant. If the net change for any single pollutant is more than a certain threshold, then that pollutant must go through a more stringent review. As I mentioned, it's either an entertainment or PSD. Now, the netting analysis performed for this project shows that the net change in emissions for all individual pollutants is less than its specified threshold. So for this project, no pollutant is required to go through a non-attainment or PSD permit review. Now, I would like to point out that although the proposed project is not subject to these particular types of review, it must still comply with all other applicable rules and regulations. And throughout the review process and during development of the proposed draft permit, the AQD has ensured that the applicable state and federal rules have been met. For example, the updated project must show that it would still comply with State of Michigan Rule 702 for VOCs. This part of the review is based on what we call or what is referred to as a best available control technology or backed analysis. And the back review for this project results in one of the most well-controlled automotive assembly lines in the nation. A group of regenerative thermal oxidizers is used to control the exhaust from the main coating courses of the paint shop. Now, a regenerative thermal oxidizer, also known as, also typically referred to as an RTO, is a device that uses natural gas and high temperatures to destroy VOCs which lowers emissions into the atmosphere. Now, for those of you who attended the hearing a few years ago, this may look somewhat familiar. This is a generic design of the equipment that is controlled by RTOs. Now, in the old assembly line, the equipment being controlled was the prime and top coat ovens. In the updated assembly line, the additional processes noted here are also controlled. I would like to point out that the proposed updates to the project do not change the level of control from the RTOs at any point. In addition to the Rule 702 review, other evaluations were performed. One example of this is computer simulations, which is commonly referred to as modeling, which were performed for NOx, particulate matter equal to or less than 10 microns, also known, also called PM10, and particulate matter less equal to or less than 2.5 microns in diameter, which is commonly referred to as PM2.5. Now, the modeling results of, for this project show that no violation of any national standards is expected. Now, due to GM's request to make slight changes to the natural gas equipments, a new modeling demonstration is required. Once it's received, AQD will be reviewing that with, as I said before, with the same scrutiny as the, as the original demonstration. Also, the AQD reviewed emissions for other compounds from the project referred to as toxic air contaminants or TACs and compared those emissions against the state of Michigan health-based screening levels. Now, these screening levels are designed to protect against health issues like developing cancer or breathing problems. Most of the screening levels are for individual pollutants and most of the pollutants in this review were evaluated that way. Since people are exposed to multiple pollutants at once, this is a limitation within the rules. But, but within this permit review, we use a computer model to compare the requested emissions to our health-based screening levels. The initial evaluation found that the health-based screen, that the proposed project would not violate any health-based screening levels. But again, the requested changes require an updated demonstration. Again, this updated demonstration will be reviewed with the same scrutiny as the initial, as his initial submittal. So next, I'm going to talk a little bit about how the review and evaluation helps develop, helps develop the proposed permit. So the proposed permit contains emission limits for the pollutants listed here as well as a limit on how much natural gas usage the facility can use. For those of you on the phone, the permit limits are for VOCs, particulate matter, which is commonly shortened to PM, PM10, PM2.5, NOx, SO2, carbon monoxide, known as also shortened to CO, and greenhouse gases. The proposed draft permit also contains requirements for operating control devices, performing testing, monitoring the very, monitoring the various processes and record keeping of important data that would be used to show that the project meets these limits. So if the permit is approved, the emission limits in combination with the control device testing, monitoring and record keeping requirements would ensure that the Detroit Hamtramck Assembly Line complies with the rules and regulations. Now, there will be a panel of AQD staff that can answer questions you may have about the proposed project. But first, Jeff Korniski, who is the AQD Assistant District Director of the AQD Detroit District Office, would like to talk a little bit about the inspection process for facilities like GM. Jeff?
All right. Thank you, Dave. So as Dave mentioned, I am Jeff Korniski and I am the Assistant Supervisor for the Air Quality Division in the Detroit District Office, which covers sources operating in Wayne County. And as Dave mentioned, we conduct inspections to determine compliance with proposed permits and really in this case, issued permissions such as the one for the GM Detroit Hamtramck Facility. We conduct inspections at auto assembly plants of this nature at least once every two years. But in this case, because this facility has been refurbished and new, we'll be out there more often than once every two years. We conducted an inspection last August, just as the facility was starting up and will be out there again this year to conduct an inspection. But that's not the only way that we, we get information from the facility. You'll notice in this permit, Dave Thompson had included reporting requirements. Every quarter, the facility is required to send to us a summary of their emissions for the previous quarter and the previous 12 months. So for example, the most recent report that we have is for the end of December and we know that their volatile organic compound emissions from the facility was about 9.3 tons, which was in compliance with their current limit in their low production area of 29 tons. So that's another way that we determine compliance with the facility in addition to our onsite observations. They also will report their annual emissions to our mayor's emissions inventory, which collects emissions information from almost all the air quality sources in the state. And then we will also be out there in addition to the inspection observations for stack testing. Dave Thompson included in the original permit, stack testing requirements for both the low production initial portion of their operations and then continuing stack testing requirements for their, their full operations once either three years passes by or they pass the threshold for the low production period, which I think is 10,000 vehicles. So even though we're, might be going out once every year on an inspection or once every two years, we also go out at these periodic events to observe the stack testing events. In addition, if we ever receive complaints from, from individuals regarding odors or back when they were burning coal in their powerhouse, we might get smoke complaints. We also follow up with onsite visits to the facility under those circumstances as well. So, so that's really how we determine compliance with facilities such as this. And I'm going to send it back to Jennifer Dixon to bring us into the question and answer portion of the night.
Yeah, thanks to both of you. I appreciate you walking us through that. This is the time when we get to the Q and A portion. So if folks have questions, go ahead and put them in that question box. Just going to go ahead and have my staff all turn on my panelists, turn your cameras back on. Just to go through again, how you can ask a question tonight. So go ahead and type the question into the question box. If you would like to raise your hand to ask a question, you can do that and I'll attempt to mute your line. Unmute your line. Oh, I'm having a hard time saying words tonight. I apologize to everyone for that. All right. Okay, so we do have a question coming in. All right. So this is a good question and, and I think Dave, you can speak to this a little bit more holistically. But if you can't, maybe Jeff can talk to this. So the question is, how many tons of VOCs can we expect the facility to emit per year? So there's always a difference between what a company might be permitted to do and then what their actual emissions are. So Jeff talked a little bit about the annual emissions reporting that a company like this company has to do. And then they'll have their permitted limits and because they're kind of in a state of flux right now with the low production and things going on like that, I don't know if you can talk a little bit about that, Dave. And then if Jeff, if you want to maybe add some other information, that would be helpful, I think.
Um, yeah, I mean, I, as you said, Jen, the, the, where the permit is reviewed at is for their allowable emissions, which is from the assembly line is 330 tons of VOCs. There are, there are some other operations at the facility such as a few, some natural gas and a boiler and I'm not sure, I'd forget what else is there that will result in a small addition or small additional amount of VOC emissions from that. But the large majority of VOC emissions expected from a facility such as this is contained within that, that 300 and approximately 330 tons per year. As Jeff, I'm not sure if, as Jeff said, there's a low initial production period where it's, it's 29 tons currently. The proposal is to go up to 39 tons for the low production period. After that is over, then it would, then it would, their allowable would be go up to 331 tons. But in terms of actual stuff, I don't know if you have any insight on that one.
Oh, yeah, I can add a few things. So, yeah, how much would we expect this facility to emit in a year? As Dave said, so they can, they can only go up to as much as they are allowed by the permit, which is, you know, somewhere around 330 tons per year. But that doesn't mean that that's exactly how much that they will emit. We have limits or daytime. We have limits or Dave Thompson has put in limits for the 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 cap, which is 330 and then also there is there's limits in terms of pounds per the number of view for for every vehicle that is that goes through the plant. So if their if their production is, let's say, half of what they expect, then they won't be emitting around 330 tons per year of VOCs. There'll be somewhat less than that. So less production doesn't necessarily mean that they get to emit more per job. That's sort of what Dave was talking about in terms of best technology for volatile organic compounds. So we know what the cap is. It's it's a little uncertain because there is the ability for this plan and other plans to over time install exempt devices, which will not might not be covered under this particular permit that might add a few more tons here or there. That's not again, it's not just this facility that can do that. Any facility under our rules is capable of doing that. But generally speaking, when you see the numbers in the permit, such as Dave has around 330, that's pretty much the top end of what they will emit. But it usually facilities never reach that point. I think in the in the previous presentation that Dave had a couple of years ago, there was a graph comparing what the old plant permitted and and how much they actually admitted and what they would expect to admit now. And the allowable emissions for the old plant was in the thousands of tons of VOCs, but they really didn't approach that. They usually approach somewhere in the hundreds. And I would expect the same thing here. I don't expect them to reach that level of 330, but you know, that is possible. They could admit that much, but it's unlikely because again, we're going with the the very maximum that they are allowed to do and very few facilities actually reach that maximum.
Reports are available online and if anyone is interested, I could very easily walk you through how to get that information. So this is a question for you, Dave. The question is, you know, what are we including when we talk about greenhouse gases? Because some, you know, there's different things that are believed to contribute to greenhouse gas formation. So can you talk a little bit about what you included when you were talking about that in this permit?
Sure. For the for the purposes of of an air permit review, the greenhouse gases are evaluated based on combustion. Basically, it's it's natural. It's for this particular one is natural gas combustion. There are certain emission factors for various products of of natural gas. Various natural gas constituents that result from that. There's also a few diesel emergency engines that have natural, I'm sorry, the constituents of that. And basically you take it's it's in short, it's from combustion of natural gas and diesel. Those have certain emission factors and that's how it's calculated from the allowable usage and combustion of those materials.
Okay, thank you. So this question, I think that I'm understanding it. So I I hope that I don't misinterpret this question, but the question was about providing access to stack monitoring that occurs. So I think we're talking about the stack testing data that you had mentioned, Jeff. And if I'm not, if that's not correct, then please do type something, you know, a caveat back into that. So having to FOIA that information can be difficult for people. And so we do what we do post online is the they call it the executive summary and it's instead of having all the data that was collected during the stack test posted online, we just post that executive summary. So, yeah, typically a FOIA would be would be required to get that other data. But if you are looking for something other than that, you can always try to give us a call and we can see if we do have it digitally. We probably just as easily send it to you. But I think that's what you're asking about. But if it's not, then please do let me know. So this is an interesting question and okay, thanks. That was correct. All right. Yes, definitely. Okay, um, so this is an interesting question and I'm going to pass this over to Jeff because we had talked about this being one of the most well-controlled assembly lines in the country. And I know we talked about that during the initial new assembly line permits that we dealt with a couple of years ago. And you mentioned that again today, Dave. So and we also talked about how the modeling indicates for this project, at least that we aren't going to be violating any health-based standards. But there has been some instances in other parts of the area where maybe some equipment wasn't installed properly. So what I want to ask Jeff is during the most recent inspection, was this something that we considered during that inspection? Have we gotten odor complaints for this facility? Can you talk a little bit about sort of that inspection that was done in August and then whether or not we've gotten order complaints for this facility?
Yeah, so we did visit this, you know, the GM plant in August. It was right as they were starting, I believe their first, what we would call saleable vehicle was the day before. So it was just as the plant was was starting, you know, production in a kind of a halting manner and they they picked that up in the last few months. To date, we haven't had an order complaint for the for the refurbished plant. Honestly, we didn't really receive many order complaints for this facility under the under the old design as well. You know, I I acknowledge that the Stellantis plant that was just came into operation somewhat around the same time has run into to more problems and we've cited that that facility for not only nuisance violations, but also a failure to control emissions as was required in their permit. That's, you know, public information and the violation notices are online. We didn't observe any similar events when we walked through the facility in August. But we will, that's, you know, the reason that we go onsite to do inspections and especially during stack testing events, because that's when we do follow the ductwork around as well and make sure that everything's being controlled properly. I, you know, I acknowledge that sometimes companies do not comply with the permits that we issue to them. And that's why we have an enforcement program. So I can't given an absolute assurance that in this case that the facility will comply. We expect them to. You know, we have at one time and I I lost count of the number of auto assembly plants in the state, but we still had about a third to 40% of the auto assembly plants in the state in Wayne County. And they comply to various degrees of satisfaction with their applicable requirements. There are some facilities that produce far more order or we receive far more order complaints than others. So we treat each one individually. And like I said, I can't make a promise that they absolutely will be in compliance, but we expect them to be. And if they're not, then we will take the appropriate enforcement action to bring them into compliance.
Yeah. So thank you for talking about that. And and I was adding on the odors as sort of an example, but really the crux of the question was, you know, what are we going to do to make sure that this facility installs and operates their equipment properly? So I think you did talk to that when we talk about the inspections that we do. We're definitely, you know, uber cognizant of the fact that we have facilities recently that didn't do that like they were supposed to. That certainly on all of our inspectors minds when we're going out probably more so than it was before, but that is part of our process is to look at all of that equipment. So, you know, as Jeff said, we expect that the company is going to do all the right things. If they don't, that's why we have an enforcement process. So I really do appreciate that question. So I I think I want to I'm trying to think who is going to be best to answer this question, but I'm thinking I might have Mike Depo weigh in a little bit on this one. So the question is about public health experts and and have they weighed in on the potential impact of these proposed changes, especially for sensitive groups? So we don't necessarily consult with health experts, but we do have toxicologists. We do have toxic air contaminant rules and regulations. A lot of our other rules and regulations are written with public health and protecting the environment in mind. So I don't know, Mike, if you can talk just a little bit about what your role is with that and, you know, how those rules are created to be as protective as they can be.
Thanks. So when a permit comes in, somebody like Dave Thompson will look at all the emissions and they'll and give it to Stephanie, who models the emissions and calculates a ambient air impact at the fence line. In our rules, our toxics rules mandate that we look at each toxic air contaminant and the impact has to be below the screening level. And we have screening levels for that was well, roughly 1300 toxic air contaminants and there's short term and long term health screening levels. And what how we how we derive those screening levels? We do a literature shirt literature search, find out the most sensitive health effect that this toxic air contaminant could potentially cause. And we derive a health-based screening level that would be protective for sensitive subgroups, such as anybody with asthma, children or elderly. And so it's it's chemical by chemical, we make sure that each and every impact is below the screening level.
Yeah, thank you, Mike. I appreciate your input on that. This is an interesting question and this might go back to a sort of a previous permitting conversation. The last time we were out, this might be a little bit different and you can correct me if I'm wrong on this one, Dave. But the question is, does the permit take into account fugitive emissions? So that when we talk about fugitive emissions, we're talking about things that aren't necessarily going through a smoke step. They might be coming out of doors, windows, other openings, things like that. Does it take into account fugitive emissions from VOCs or other chemicals like acetone? So I don't know if, because this is a little bit of a more of a combustion related permit request where the other one was more, you know, talking about volatiles and things like that. But maybe you can kind of a little bit talk about how we look at fugitives, especially in a facility like this.
Sure. Yeah. And I mean, in this facility, the fugitives are typically from there's certain natural gas equipment that is used for space heating, used for various other things. Those are those are included in the model. And emissions from those, they are modeled as a, I believe we did their model as a volume source. It's also similar to some of the fugitives are for VOCs specifically are through, they basically, they have to wipe down these vehicles extensively. There is mainly basically cleaning that is done within the facility that is not specifically sent to an RTO because it's throughout the facility and in order to in order to control that, you would have to put on a much larger type of, I mean, the RTO, the type of oxidized you have to be put on would be so large, it would be it would, it's not really feasible to do that. So there is some wiping that goes on. Again, it goes into our model for the usage of those materials and is used in in our our tech modeling specifically for VOCs and it is evaluated for this for the for the permit.
Okay, so it is looked at in the
John, you got you're muted.
I'm sorry, unmuted. And then I must have muted myself again. I just wanted to clarify that that you you did say, Dave, that it is done and looked at during the modeling that Stephanie did on the project. We do look at fugitive emissions, especially with the
Yes.
All right, perfect. So this is an interesting question. It goes to the backed analysis. And I don't know the answer to this, so I'm hoping that you can talk a little bit about this. So when we're doing a backed analysis, especially for a project that's proposing natural gas usage like this, is there a requirement as part of that analysis to look at other fuels? So or to look at, you know, electric instead of gas or anything like that, solar wind, you know, is that part of the requirements? And can you talk a little bit about how that would work?
For the backed analysis, it looks at some of these things, the the that is a good question. The the design of the facility is is typically up to the it's up to the facility. They know what they need in order to perform the project and create the material and create the product that they are trying to do. In 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 this case, there are the different natural gas. Obviously, there's RTOs. There's curing ovens that get up to a, you know, reasonably high you know, a reason to have to get hot enough in order to cure all of these. We typically look at, you know, the type of combustion that they are do that they are using and evaluate whether that is the best option for the for the type of equipment that is proposed. So if they are required, you know, if they if their design needs the natural get piece of natural gas equipment or needs a piece of combustion equipment in order to do that, we evaluate and determine that for a piece of natural gas equipment or for a piece of combustion equipment, natural gas really is the best option for that. We don't necessarily require them, you know, it's if if electric would be best for them, a company typically would not want to pay for the extra natural gas usage for that equipment if they could get away with a piece of like electric of electronic equipment because natural gas. This is a generalization, but it typically costs more than electric electric.
But the rule itself doesn't
The rule itself doesn't require them to look at that.
Okay. Interesting. So this is another question and I we're we probably won't be able to answer this one tonight, but we can definitely get back to you if you want to provide your contact information. And the question is, are there risks for water and soil contamination? Are we going to be looking at that? So, you know, unfortunately, we're primarily here to talk about the proposed air permit. So our staff expertise lies in that area. We certainly have staff at Eagle that can help answer that question. We're happy to do that. So if you want to provide your email address or or whatever, get back, contact one of us afterwards. I'll definitely give Dave's contact information at the end of the evening tonight. And if you want to send your question over to him, he can get you to the right people. That's not a problem at all. So I just want to check and make sure I don't have any hands raised for questions. Otherwise, we might consider moving on to the public hearing portion of the night. I don't want to give you guys just a second to see if there's any other questions that pop in. Okay, so this is a question that's going a little bit more towards looking at things in an additive way. So the question is about looking at how we look at each air contaminant individually and in each permit individually. So does the question is, does that mean that Air Quality Division doesn't assess larger air quality environmental issues when assessing a new permit? So when we're talking about those sort of cumulative impacts and looking at things collectively, we do do that in part. We don't do that in a way that is completely holistic because we don't have rules and regulations or the tools to do that. But we do do that and is the best ways that we can. So we do that through our air modeling. We do that through a lot of our reviews. So I, Steph, I would like to just open this up to you. If you can talk a little bit about how the different pieces that we use in our air model to look at bring in some of the areas around us, the areas around facilities like this and some of our modeling and some things like that. I think that that could be helpful to explaining, you know, the parts of this that we do look at in a more of an additive way.
So I can go ahead and do that. For this application, we did do criteria pollutant modeling. And with that, it's kind of in a way a cumulative analysis, we start with the application, what they're proposing to change. So we'll look at that. And if that is the impacts of what they're proposing to change, if it is small enough, that is below what EPA calls a significant impact level. Each different criteria pollutant has a different significant impact level. And for this facility, we looked at nitrogen oxide, PM 10 and PM 2.5. So so again, we'll start with with what they're asking the Um, so, so again, we'll start with with what they're asking the application. From there, we'll go ahead and add additional sources. Um, and. Put it towards the PSD increment. So basically, what we're going to look at there is, okay, let's look at the facility. And now let's add any existing, whether it's existing at that facility or neighboring sources. Um, so facilities. That exist outside, um, in or at the area, let's do an analysis combining both of those two. So the permit application and then nearby sources, um, that are what they call pre baseline. Um, or post baseline, I'm sorry, they're they're baseline dates for each criteria pollutant and I'm not going to go into that a whole lot right now. It's very confusing, but basically. Emissions pass a certain date, so we'll do a cumulative analysis for that. So that's called the PSD increment. So we'll make sure that the facility is below that. Then the next step is is the National Ambient Air Quality Standards, which are set by EPA. That is looking at the application, um, what they're proposing, any. Additional sources at that facility that is, um, emitting that pollutant. Neighboring facilities that are emitting that pollutant, I think in all honesty for. NOx, I think we. I added like thirteen additional sources nearby. Besides the GM Hamtramck facility itself, we added into the model and for PM ten and PM two point five, it was more like. I think it was seven or eight nearby facilities. Just because there were more NOx facilities in the area, so we'll add those into the model as well. And then along with that, we'll add the background concentrations from one of our background monitors. So in that sense, we do kind of look at accumulative analysis. It's not just the project, not just the facility itself. We look at neighboring. Facilities, what they're, um, contributing to the area, we'll add our background monitor to that and ensure that these. These standards set by EPA, um, that the impacts are below those those health based standards.
Thank you so much. Uh, so we had one other question that came in, we're talking about, um, non attainment. So I don't, Dave, I'm going to throw this one to you and see if you can. Respond to it. You did talk a little bit about non attainment. Um, when you went through the permit evaluation and you did mention that this area is in non attainment for sulfur dioxide. And for ozone. So the question is, how can, how can a company in a non attainment zone for ozone add additional? Um, NOx nitrogen oxides and volatile organic compounds? How can we write a permit for that? How is that allowable?
Um, well, the way that the regulation is written, the the non attainment regulations are. To allow for growth in industry while still trying to bring us back into attainment. And the, there are avenues that are in the rules that. Um, allow this such as either non attainment. Uh, review or in this case, they did a netting analysis and in the netting analysis, they're allowed to take reductions and. You know, historic increases and decreases, the project, uh, how emissions have kind of. As I said, increased and decreased from the facility over over the last few years or X number of years and incorporate that into their analysis. If it is below that threshold, then they are not subject to news, uh, non attainment review. If they are above non attainment review, they kill, still can do more projects. But it is a stringent. Um, it is a more stringent review for that. And as I said, for this. Case, all of the, um, netting analyses came out below those thresholds. Um, in terms of plant. Now, I guess they'll just. Jenna, I'll come back to you, sorry.
Oh, that's okay. You did have that really that slide that kind of went through that nutting analysis because it is a complicated. Process and it's a great question because it kind of feels like. You know, how how are, how do these things measure up? And and Dave's absolutely right, the rules are written to allow companies to make sure that they are. Analyzing that as part of their permit application. We also look at that to make sure that we're not going to be going over any of those thresholds. Um, but it is a really good question, so I appreciate the answering of that and the question itself. All right. So we're getting close to seven here. I'm just going to give another few seconds, make sure we don't have any other questions, but you guys ask great questions and I always appreciate when folks. Ask questions. Because we want to give you the information that you need to be able to make a comment or decide if you want to make a comment. Once we get to that public. Hearing portion, we're going to start in just a minute here. Um, Steph, if you guys want to go ahead and turn your cameras off, I'll have Mary Ann turn hers on so we can get ready to transition over. Just to remind everybody that this portion of the night is where you will be providing us with your comments on this proposed projects. We'll be. Listening to those comments, but we won't be responding. So I just wanted to let you know that. Um, one other thing I wanted to mention is that a lot of people. That are on tonight, when you registered, you indicated that you wanted to make a comment. So I am going to start with those folks who already did indicate they wanted to make a comment. When I start calling names, I went through and I think I got everybody who was on who said they wanted to make a comment, so. Um, I'll do my best to go through those that way and what I'll do is I'll call names of a few people. And I'll have you just raise your hand virtually so that I can see it on my list and I'll be able to unmute you in that way. Um, so the way the hearing works is we will, I'll read you a, um, an opening statement that will officially start the hearing and then once that is over. We'll start calling names. So Mary Ann and I will both be listening to your comments, um, and Mary Ann will use those comments during her decision. So, all right, I'm going to go ahead and transition over. So I apologize in advance for this statement being dry, but I just want to make sure that we get this official statement on the record. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to this public hearing. My name is Jennifer Dixon and I am with the Environmental Support Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I will be the hearing officer tonight. We also have Mary Ann Dolehanti, Air Quality Division Director, the decision maker for this permit application, listening in on the hearing this evening. This hearing is for a proposed permit to install for changes to the automotive manufacturing process at General Motors LLC Detroit Hamtramck Assembly. Currently permitted under permit to install number two zero nine dash one nine. The facility is located at twenty five hundred East Grand Boulevard, Detroit, Michigan. The changes specifically request to add additional natural gas equipment and usage, install new emergency equipment. Use a new sealer and adhesive material and to change some stack parameters and locations. I do have some background information for you before we begin. The Air Quality Division is responsible for regulating sources of air pollutants to minimize adverse impact on public health and the environment. The law governing those responsibilities is part fifty five of the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act. Before the company can make the changes they are requesting, they must obtain a permit that meets the requirements of Michigan's air quality laws. This means that the equipment must be capable of meeting state and federal emission standards, including health based standards. The proposed permit must also contain conditions that include emission limits and specific ways of operating the equipment to ensure that these standards are met. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed changes an opportunity to provide information that department may use in deciding whether to approve the permit to install. Or if there are additional issues to, uh, consider. Please note the proposed permit to install is still a draft permit. This does not mean the department has already made a decision. Instead. It reflects an initial technical review of the proposal. We hope having the details of the draft permit available will help you in providing comments. Everything in the draft permit remains open for comment and further consideration by the department, including whether the permit will be granted at all. Please recognize the department can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria the department must use in making a decision. For example, concerns related to local zoning, truck traffic and noise are not within the department's authority. Some of you may want to simply express your support or opposition to the proposed project. We'll be happy to make note of your position, but please understand the department is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether there is widespread support or opposition to the proposed project. This hearing is being recorded and your comments will be part of the information the department will consider in making its decision on the proposed project. The public comment period for this project began January twenty sixth, twenty twenty two and will end at midnight on March fourteenth, twenty twenty two. Additional information may be submitted through that time via written or verbal comment during this hearing by email or by voicemail. After the close of the public comment period, the decision maker will review all written and verbal comments received. All significant air quality related comments will be considered, at which point a final decision on the permit application will be made by the decision maker. The decision maker may deny the permit. Approve as drafted or approved with amendments. If approved, the decision must specify which provisions of the draft permit, if any, have been changed in the final permit and the reasons for the change. In all three of these scenarios, all interested parties, including everyone who was on the original mailing list. Anyone who provided comments during the public comment period. And anyone who attended the public hearing will be directly notified of the decision. Included in the mailing will be a letter from the decision maker regarding the decision and if applicable, the proposed, or I apologize, the approved permit. As stated previously, you must, you may submit a written comment at any time to the email address provided later on tonight. Or call in the comment to our public comment voicemail. You may also some type the word comment into the question box and submit your comment that way. I will read your comment aloud unless you state do not read. If you would like to make a verbal comment, you may raise your hand and I'll unmute your line so you can speak. We'll limit your comment time to three minutes. If you're speaking, I will let you know when you have about thirty minutes left, thirty seconds left, thirty minutes will be a long time. Thirty seconds left and I'll do my best to address commenters in the order your hands are raised, but please bear with me as the technology does have some limitations with that. Please recognize the department staff are here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your views on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. Thank you so much for your attention. I will now begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Okay, all right. So the first folks, the first three people that I have on my list right now are Reverend Buttry. KT Andreski. And Leila Junko. So if the three of you could raise your hand by just using your raise hand icon, that'll put you up to the top of my list and then I can. Unmute you. And those three names again were Reverend Sharon Buttry, KT Andreski and Leila Junko. Okay, Reverend Buttry, I'm going to go ahead. I thought you raised your hand. Where'd you go? You disappeared on me. Hold on one second. All right, Reverend Buttry, I'm going to call you second. If you can just raise your hand, you keep disappearing from my list here. I'm going to go to KT Andreski first. So KT, I'm going to go ahead and. I meet your line and you should be able to make your comment as soon as you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me?
We got you.
Okay, thank you. GM Factory Zero is selling itself as a net zero carbon emissions factory. Yet our overburdened community is now. In this hearing for more air pollutants. Net zero is a false solution that relies on carbon offsets, meaning companies can buy their way out. Of accountability and regulation by paying for green actions elsewhere. But they're allowed to pollute in communities like mine. Under net zero schemes. Uh, low income communities and communities of color will always be sacrificed. I want to know what the company will do for our community. As they are choosing to pollute here. I live in the neighborhood near GM plant and other polluted facilities like US Ecology. And the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy has a pattern of neglect and disregard for communities of color and overburdened communities like mine. My community is overburdened with pollution and negative health impacts that affect a lot of birth rates. Um, cancer rates, asthma. And learning challenges for children. Even if we stop the pollution all around us today, the effects of this pollution will stay with us for the rest of our lives. In twenty twenty, we lost twenty two neighbors in our small community because of the effects of air pollution in our neighborhood. Combined with respiratory illness of COVID. Eagle has a legal obligation based on the EPA's Title Six regulations to make licensing decisions that ensure, quote. No discriminatory effect. Today, Eagle has focused on access to information and meaningful involvement of the public. In non discriminatory manner for public hearings and language specific materials, and that's progress. What we don't have in the granting of permits and oversight of industry is a fair treatment. And this is a part. Of the respiratory or the responsibility of Eagle. Determining cumulative health risks and impacts within a community like mine, not just for industries, but within our community. Should be the basis of fair treatment. Title six clearly lays out the principles to protect us from adverse health impacts. To ensure that there is no discriminatory effects of Eagle decisions and enforcement in communities of color. Even though Eagle knows we are an overburdened, non attainment community, we are not seeing any reduction in pollution. We're actually seeing an increase of up to three hundred and thirty tons of VOCs per year, and that's not fair treatment. Title six and cumulative impact analysis for communities must be adopted and reported. To the community by Eagle as a standard in every permit decision, especially for overburdened communities. I also urge you to conduct more frequent monitoring of equipment and air surrounding the GM facility. As an added protection of what you can do for our community today. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment, KT. I appreciate it. Reverend Buttry, I'm going to unmute you, so you should be able to go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Mary Ann and Jennifer. Uh, my name is Reverend Sharon Buttry. I'm a Hamtramck resident and a member of the Detroit Hamtramck Coalition for Advancing Healthy Environments. And my comments will cover PM. Uh, two point five emissions, adhesives and some other chemical controls and also. Uh, speak to some of the same things that KT spoke about on the cumulative health impact, legal obligations of MD Eagle. Uh, first of all, PM two point five standards are currently under review by the EPA and acceptable rates will likely be lowered. Since the modeling for GM comes in at ninety four percent of the NA AQs, a number that will need to be watched. As standards change. So in Hamtramck this week on my phone, the air quality index was fifty two with a warning. That air quality may pose a risk for some people who are unusually sensitive to pollution. Including PM two point five. We know that fifty one percent of all asthma hospitalizations in Michigan were from Wayne County between twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen. I request that GM would be required to reduce PM two point five pollution for this facility based on the expected change in standards. And as you mentioned, of course, you have to look at all the other industries in the area as well. Uh, second. Adhesive and sealants used in production are a concern. They were not mentioned in the presentation tonight. These are not controlled and oxidized in the same way as VOCs. So it's possible that some emissions from adhesives and adhesives and sealants. Might make their way into the air we breathe through general plant exhaust. Of course, many residents are concerned about odors, potential odors from the facility. And cumulative effects of all controlled and fugitive emissions from the facility and the broader surrounding area. Must be assessed for health impacts and odors. And we would appreciate updating an assessment about those, um, particular fugitive emissions. And I believe that Eagles should require the facility to take significant steps to reduce any potential odor issues. And also prepare an odor mitigation plan that will detail all those operational systems designed to prevent odors. Lastly, is the concern about, uh, the emissions, uh, reduction and control. We, we've heard tonight that this is supposed to be the most efficient. Plant in the United States and that worst case scenarios have been, uh, vetted carefully and and calculations have been made. But I, uh, believe that we who live in the neighborhoods nearby and downwind have a right to call out Eagle. Uh, MD Eagle, um, because I see patterns of neglect and disregard, especially for communities of color.
Our. I'm sorry to interrupt, but you do have about thirty more seconds.
Okay, so I agree with the previous speaker that MD Eagle has a legal obligation based on EPA guidance via the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty four. Title six regulations to make permit decisions that ensure no discriminatory effect. Uh, uh, to date, Eagle has focused on access to information and meaningful public involvement. I appreciate that. But what we do not have is equitable treatment for our communities in the granting of permits and, um. Enforcing those permits and the actions of industry. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Buttry. I appreciate your comment. Going to call out a few more names here that we've got on our list. Um, Catherine Savoy was the first one, but I think that she might have left. But Catherine, if you're still on, please do raise your hand. Melissa Sergeant and Diane Wickerly, if you are still on, if you want to raise your hand, if you would still like to make a comment tonight, please do that at this time. All right, Diane, I'm going to unmute you for right now. And then, like I said, Catherine Savoy and Melissa Sergeant, and then the next person that I had on my list, actually, the last person I had on my list that indicated already that they would like to make a comment is Julia Sosin. All right, Diane, you should be able to unmute your line. Let's try that one more time.
No, can you?
There you go. Yes, I can hear you. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Um, my name is Diane Wickerly. I work with the Detroit Hamptonham Coalition for Advancing Healthy Environments. And um, my concern, I'm going to speak to just one issue, and that's the VOCs. Um, I'm, I'm very concerned about the additional 330,000 um, tons of volatile organic chemicals or compounds that will be projected and released into the air around the proposed GM plant each year, according to the fact sheet and according to the discussion we had tonight. Um, the reason I'm concerned about this is Detroit has had the highest rate of preterm births of any city in the country, according to the March of Dimes premature birth report card of 2019, for which the city was given an F on the report card. Um, according to extensive research done by Wayne State University's Healthy Urban Waters Team um, under Dr. Laura Tremore Spears. Um, they wrote a document which said, quote, "chronic low-level exposures to environmental volatile organic compounds impacts fetal outcomes." So basically, this means when a woman is exposed to pollutants, um, especially VOCs we're talking about here, when she's exposed to pollutants during pregnancy, the child is at risk for preterm birth, low birth weight, for being small for gestational age. And this child will be at risk for chronic disease and other adverse birth outcomes. Um, so this will have a major impact on public health and the community. Um, so every effort must be made to reduce the overall amount of VOCs and other pollutants to protect the next generation of children in the area. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment, Diane. All right, Melissa Sergeant, I'm going to unmute your line so you can make your comment. All right. There you go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Thanks for, um, holding this hearing tonight. Um, I want to echo much of what was already said by previous speakers. Um, my name is Melissa Cooper, Sergeant. I am a resident nearby the facility. And I'm very concerned that there's, that we are already in a non-attainment zone for ozone, um, and which includes VOCs and nitrous oxides. And uh, there should be no additional releases of pollutants that we are already maxed out on uh, non-attainment, meaning that, you know, the people who live in the area around the facility are already breathing these pollutants. There's already a lot in the air, and these are pollutants, as our previous speaker said, that can cause a lot of life-threatening and life-damaging health effects. Uh, we, we're a community that has already experienced a lot of damage, even though the incinerator is shut down and it's not currently emitting. The pollutants that came from that facility are still in our lungs, it's still in our body. Uh, we want to think about particulate matter, which is a greenhouse gas, as well as a respiratory irritant, something that can cause and trigger asthma. And we don't even know that we're breathing it because it doesn't have an odor. But yet, the particulate matter, um, 2.5 and PM 10, or they're so small that, um, they, when we breathe it in, it's something that can get lodged into our lungs. And if it's tiny enough, it can even pass into the bloodstream, uh, affecting heart and other organs of the body. So we would ask that, um, Eagle do more monitoring, requires facilities to do more monitoring. At least with the incinerator, we had, um, daily monitoring of, of some of these pollutants, not particulate matter, but some of the other ones. Uh, so we would like to see more monitoring so we know what's in the air and we know uh, how to respond to that. And again, um, like other people have said, we really should be considering cumulative impacts because it's not just one facility. There's many facilities that are still functioning and, um, and the wind moves and it, you know, we might be getting pollutants coming from the other side of the city as well. So if we had cumulative impacts and better air monitoring, um, then we would have a better idea of exactly what kind of pollutants we are dealing with and what kind of health impacts we might be dealing with. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. I appreciate your comment. I have one other person who has raised their hand to make a comment. So if I haven't called your name, but you still would like to make a comment, um, go ahead and raise your hand so that I can see that you would like to. Again, if we have folks calling in on the phone, it's pound two on your phone. That will raise your hand for me so that I can see that you would like to make a comment. So, uh, Julia Sosin, you had indicated you wanted to make a comment. You should be able to unmute your line. There you go. Yep, I can see you ready to talk.
Hi, my name is Julia Sosin. I'm a resident of Hamptonham, and I work in Detroit. I would love to believe that the best available control technology that you all discussed will protect my family and neighbors from any adverse effects posed by the toxic air contaminants associated with the GM Detroit Hamptonham Assembly. And we did receive some information about how nearby facilities were considered, but I remain skeptical. The communities surrounding the plant largely comprise of people of color. Um, many are low on income, um, or technically living in poverty, already deal with the adverse impacts of health from all the cumulative air pollution we breathe. And, um, we're already in a non-attainment zone for ozone. So though outside of the scope of this hearing, I just would like to say we still deserve fair treatment. And I hope Eagle will tightly and frequently monitor all activities at this plant, respond quickly to odor issues, and require an odor mitigation plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia, for your comment. Um, Mr. Gearheart, I have you next. Okay, you should be ready to make your comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for having the hearing. Uh, I think, uh, it's important for context. And I really addressed these comments both to General Motors and the state of Michigan that for those of us that have worked in the state of Michigan and worked on these issues for a couple decades, if we're going to continue to be an auto manufacturing state where it's core to our economy, we need to do better with these plants. And I'll just use a metaphor, you know, with, with the internal combustion engine, we try to limit emissions using catalytic converters. Now we have an electrical vehicle plant that essentially we're using old technology with regenerative thermo oxidizers to control the emissions. And who gets left behind in this is the community. So we need to have a high-level discussion about the types of technology we use in these plants. It's not best available technology. If it is the best we can do, that's pretty sad. Uh, if this is a factory zero, it should be a true factory zero where we're eliminating these emissions and we're actually optimizing the processes in the plants. The idea that we're permitting diesel generators and natural gas dock heaters here, where was the alternative assessment on that? And why wasn't GM asked to prove that they needed those technologies? We shouldn't be permitting those. And I don't see any backed analysis in the, in the document that showed that. For historical context, when you look at plants that were permitted in Europe as well as US, we've been in about a 10-year stagnation in terms of the performance of these plants. Most of these plants are still averaging about two and a half to five or six pounds per vehicle of VOCs. And partly that's because we haven't asked the industry, we haven't challenged the industry to do things differently. And because they come in and ask that they want to do things a certain way, we're letting them do that. We need to have a high-level discussion, and we're willing to do it. We'd love to have a discussion with communities, folks that are concerned about this, about how we generate the next generation of how we produce cars. And that's going to include looking at alternative ways to paint cars, alternative coating technologies, re-looking at powder, re-looking at powder coating, mold and colors, and any number of other technologies. But that's going to require a willing partnership from GM, the state of Michigan, to stop doing business as usual and to continue to permit these plants. Where we're going to be making electric vehicles in plants that are using this old coating technology, and we're using regenerative thermo oxidizers. So I will offer that up as, as an opportunity for us to collectively engage, engage in a discussion of how do we change this? Otherwise, we're just nibbling around the edges on here. If we're going to make electric vehicles, we need to make them in truly factory-zero plants, and we need to really be looking at these issues. So, uh, look forward to more conversation on that. I look forward to making Michigan actually have true or much lower emission factories, not being dependent on regenerative thermo oxidizers and not burning all this natural gas. So thank you for the time and look forward to the conversation.
Thank you so much for your comment, Mr. Gearheart. So at this time, I don't have any other folks who have, uh, indicated that they would like to make a comment. I'll give you guys just another minute or so just to make sure there is no other hands raised. Um, click that raise hand icon on the bottom of your screen, or like I said earlier, if you're calling in, just go ahead and click the pound two on your phone, and that should raise your hand for me. So I'll just give you another little bit here just to make sure that we're not missing anybody who would like to comment tonight. As we are waiting, well, I'll just talk a little bit about the fact that I'm going to go over other ways that you can make a comment. If you would like to, if you're not ready to do so tonight, we definitely have other ways to do that, and this is not your only opportunity to do so. All right, not seeing any other hands, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing out. And I just need to read a short statement to close the hearing, and then if you'd like to stay on, uh, there's just a couple other things that we'll go over that will hopefully help you review information about this proposed project and then decide if you want to make a comment or not. So thank you for taking the time to participate in the, this meeting tonight. We appreciate your interest in protecting Michigan's air quality. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, the public comment period will close at midnight on March 14, 2022. All interested parties, anyone who provided comments during the public comment period, and anyone who attended this public hearing will be directly notified of the final decision on this proposed permit. So the hearing is now closed. Thank you again for all of your comments and your time. Just a couple other quick things to go over so that everyone has the information that they need or want. Uh, so the first thing to go over is how else can you make a comment? If you didn't make a comment tonight, but you still want to, or you made a comment and you would like to make additional comments, that's also completely fine. So we have three ways of doing it, and since we do have someone on the phone, I am going to just read these out really quickly. So if you wanted to jot them down, you'd have that available. So the first way you can do it is you can mail us information, printouts or comment handwritten on a napkin. Doesn't really matter. We take all, all kinds of comments in all kinds of different ways. And we would like you to send those to Annette Switzer. She's our permit section manager here at Eagle Air Quality Division. So Annette Switzer, Permit Section Manager, E G L E A Q D, and that is P O Box 30260, Lansing, Michigan. And the zip code on that is 48909. If you have access to email, that's also a really good way to send us information. That email address is eagle-aqd-pti-publiccomments. So that's eagle, E G L E dash A is in apple, Q is in queen, D is in dog, dash P is in Paul, T is in Tom, I is in igloo, the word public, and then the word comments. So PTI Public Comments is like all one word. And that's all at michigan.gov. So eagle-aqd-pti-publiccomments@michigan.gov. And then one of the easiest ways is just to give our voicemail a call, and then you can speak your comment aloud. Um, a lot of people like to do this, write it down, and then verbalize that into the voicemail system for us. So that is 517-284-0900. And all of the information about this proposed project that we've put together in English and in those multiple languages, Arabic and Bengali, is available at michigan.gov/eagle-air-public-notice, and eagle-air-public-notice is all one word. So what can you find there? Um, one of the things that we translated into multiple languages is the proposed project summary. So this is like pretty much a high-level overview of what this project was. So some information about what the company requested, some information about our review, including information about the monitoring, some of the modeling information, so stuff we talked about tonight, air toxics. Um, there is some other information about how you can submit comments, and that's in all three of those languages. So if you do know someone who could benefit from that, please feel free to help them and pass that along. We would really appreciate it. The technical fact sheet is not translated, that's just in English, but that is very much a, a deep dive into Dave's review of what GM was asking for in this case. So we're going to talk more about the specific rules and regulations, how we looked at them, and how we determined whether or not they apply to this project. You're also going to find the proposed permit terms and conditions. So what, um, we're here to basically talk about and comment on tonight. We will be also providing links to the meeting recording on that webpage as well. So you can find this meeting or other meetings and other, um, things open for comment on that michigan.gov/eagle-air-public-notice page. So because we have one person on the phone, I'm just going to give out Dave's contact information, but you can feel free to reach out to any of the folks on the screen that were on your panel tonight. But Dave's email address is thompsond22@michigan.gov. So his last name is spelled T as in Tom, H as in help, O as in octopus, M as in Mary, P as in Paul, S as in Sam, O as in octopus, and as in Nancy, D as in David, number 22, at michigan, all spelled out, dot gov is in government. Or feel free to give him a call at 517-582-5095. So again, we greatly appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to spend this with us. I, Mary Ann acknowledged earlier that we know folks have other things that they would probably rather be doing. But these comment periods and coming to talk to all of you is very important and really valuable to us. So thank you again so much for taking the time, like I said, out of your evening tonight, and we look forward to talking to you again soon.